Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mayor. Board of Commissioners' Public Meeting, Tuesday, January 19, 2016. The time is now 7:44. Pursuant to the requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975, notice of this meeting was published in the December 24, 2015, issues of the Nutley Sun, the Star Ledger, and the Herald News. A copy of this notice has been posted on the Nutley Town Hall Bulletin Board, and a copy is on file in the municipal clerk's office. Commissioner Rogers?
Here.
Commissioner Tucci?
Here.
Commissioner Evans?
Here.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Here.
Mayor Petracco?
Here.
All present, Mayor.
Thank you. Move on to minutes.
Yes, we have executive session minutes for December 15, 2015, December 23, 2015, and January 5, 2016. I need a motion, please.
Move it.
Thank you.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Petracco?
Aye. Communications and correspondence, please.
Yes, Mayor, we have three. One is an event application submission from the Nutley Irish American Association to hold their annual St. Patrick's Day Parade on Saturday, March 5, 2016. Need a motion?
Move it.
Need a second?
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Petracco?
Aye, thank you.
An event application submission for the Nutley Elks Lodge, number 1290, to hold their annual St. Patrick's Day Parade celebration on Saturday, March 5, 2016, from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 a.m.
Move it.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Petracco?
Aye.
Holy Family Church is requesting permission to hold a raffle on Sunday, September 25, 2016, at their annual Italian festival.
Move it.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Petracco?
Aye.
We'll move on to bills.
Yes, Mayor. Public Affairs, $190,865.75. Revenue and Finance, $2,443,708.11. Public Safety, $102,105.67. Public Works, $87,524.11. Parks and Public Property, $91,771.80. For total payroll, $739,69.83. For grant total, $3,655,045.17.
Move the bills.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Petracco?
Aye. Thank you. We'll move on to reports.
Yes, Mayor, I have a shea tree report for December of 2015.
And, Mayor, I have the fourth quarter report for the Code Enforcement Department, as well as the annual report for the Code Enforcement Department for the year 2015.
Okay, thank you. Okay, tonight, we have a lot of special guests here, I see, tonight. We are going to move on to a proclamation that I prepared this afternoon for my good friends Matthew and Vincent. Are you guys here? Why don't you guys come up to the podium? Gentlemen, how are yous tonight? Good. I just want to tell a little story about these two fine young men standing in front of our Board of Commissioners this evening. These are my two neighbors at my deli, at Petracco's Deli on Boomfield Avenue. They both live on Raymond Avenue, and I've been fortunate to meet their parents. A while back, they came to me themselves and asked me if we could raise money for cancer in our deli through a candy drive. So we all got excited, we sat in the store, we brainstormed it, and they came up with some great ideas. They raised over $1,600. They did, they did a wonderful job. So at this point, I'd just like to read the proclamation. And Vincent, your last name is kind of long, so I hope I get it right. The proclamation reads as this. Whereas Vincent Lubewiki? Close, man? A fourth grader at Spring Garden School is the son of Adriana and Vinnie Lubewiki, and brother of Matthew. And whereas Matthew, a third grader at Spring Garden School, is the son of Holly and Frank Gianni. And whereas inspired by others' acts of kindness, particularly for kindness for Christopher fundraiser, Vincent and Matthew initiated a candy drive in December to benefit St. Jude's Children's Hospital. And whereas starting with a donation from Mayor Alphonse Petracco, and a match by the boys' parents to buy candy, the boys set in motion the Candy for Cancer Drive. And whereas on December 20, from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., Vincent and Matthew set up a candy drive in Petracco's Deli, hoping to reach their goal of $1,000. Whereas using a thermometer to track their progress, the boys worked diligently through the day, quietly soliciting donations. And whereas through generosity of patrons visiting the deli, the donation total was $1,614, far exceeding their goal. And now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that Vincent Lubewiki and Matthew Gianni be recognized and congratulated on the success of their Candy for Cancer campaign in raising money for very important cause, and to also be applauded for their donation and determination to recognize the importance of giving back. You both make us all very proud. Let's give the boys a round of applause. We're going to take a quick picture with the parents. I see Grandma's here of these fine young men. Would you, Vincent, would you like to say a few words to the audience? Maybe how you started this, you and Matthew?
Like a plan that maybe we could donate something. So we got paper and a few pencils, and we started making ideas. We had a few ideas, like maybe one or two, but the one Candy for Cancer stood out, so we decided to take that one. Then Matt's mom and my mom tried to tell Al Petracco that our plan. So we, so we meet up at the deli, we set up tables. We start to talk about like the plans that we have. And we both agree on it, and we start to do it. We go to the shop, and we buy a bunch of candy. The day that we did the fundraiser, we had a bunch of candy out on the tables.
Why don't, Vin, why don't you let Matthew pick it up from here? Matthew, why don't you tell the audience tonight how the day went at the deli when you guys were fundraising?
Raised like $1,600, which was a lot. And we were like, like, we got a few customers before we even started, which was like really great. So we started off with like $67, close to there. And then we built on where other, where other people asked us, what was the prices and what was the cost for it? And we told them, and they just bought candy, and they were really happy.
That's a wonderful story. And how much were you guys selling the candy for?
Dollars.
And did some people give you more than $3 for a candy bar? A lot more, right? Well, to me, guys, this is what makes Nutley a great town and sets us apart from the rest. It's the community spirit, it's the parents' involvement. And again, you guys did a fantastic job, and I'm very proud of you both, and I'm glad to have you as neighbors at the deli. So let's take a picture now. Let's give them one more round of applause. We're so proud of them. Okay.
Motion to adjourn?
It's not that easy, Commissioner. Okay, we're going to take something out of order. Commissioner Tucci, I see we have our friends from the Irish here tonight.
Yes, we do, Mayor, thank you. Tonight, it's with, it's with great pride and admiration that on behalf of this Board of Commissioners, I'm able to present these resolutions to the 2016 St. Patrick's Day Parade dignitaries. And for those of you who are unaware, this parade has been sponsored by the Nutley Irish American Association, which is one of our premier organizations in this township and throughout the county. The things that they do, whether it's for the parade, or Relay for Life, or helping families in need, is unbelievable. And they just continue to do good things after good things. So having said that, whereas on Sunday, March 5, 2016, the Nutley Irish American Association will hold its 38th Annual St. Patrick's Day Parade to celebrate the legend and spirit of St. Patrick through a fun, good old-fashioned parade, and to promote an atmosphere of benevolence, friendship, and community spirit through the parade. And whereas St. Patrick's Day honors the cultural traditions of the Irish, but also the historic American commitment to embrace the multifaceted traditions of all immigrant people who have come to our shores. And whereas the Nutley Irish American Association will celebrate its annual St. Patrick's Day Parade Grand Marshall Dinner on Friday, January 29, 2016, at Nannitas in the Park, Belleville, New Jersey. And whereas this year's Grand Marshall is Mary Ellen Klein. And whereas Mary Ellen is President and CEO of Claromass Medical Center, and the first person to earn a bachelor's, master's, and doctorate degree in nursing at Seton Hall University, where she also serves as a clinical and adjunct professor. And whereas Mary Ellen has received a variety of personal awards and recognition, including the 2014 Humanitarian Award from the John V. Kelly Memorial Foundation, and was named Essex County Irish Woman of the Year in 2013. And whereas Mary Ellen and her husband Gerard have three children and reside in Hillsborough, New Jersey. Whereas this year's Deputy Grand Marshall is John Cruz, who is unable to be with us this evening because his mom passed away. And whereas John Cruz was born and raised in Jersey City and is employed as a Jersey City firefighter for the past 22 years. And whereas John has been an active member of the NIAA for the past 10 years, also an active member of the community coaching youth sports teams, including baseball and basketball. And whereas John is currently a Nutley resident and proud father to three beautiful children, John Jr., Christopher, and Natalie. Whereas this year's Parade Queen is Mary Kate Hood. Mary Kate is a senior at William Patterson University, graduating with her bachelor's degree in public relations this May, and currently works at Claromass Medical Center. And whereas Mary Kate was born and raised in Belleville, and her grandmother, and my very good friend, Mary Lou Hood, was one of the three founders of the Belleville Irish American Association. Whereas the 2016 Member of the Year is Maureen Connor. And whereas Maureen was raised in Lynnhurst and moved to Nutley 21 years ago. And whereas Maureen is an active member of the community and serves as a volunteer for numerous Nutley sports programs, is very active with St. Mary's Church and the Nutley Irish. And whereas Maureen and her husband Noel have five beautiful children. Whereas this year's Police Officer of the Year is Ryan Mulligan. And whereas Ryan is in his 13th year serving as a Nutley police officer. And whereas Ryan is a Nutley High School graduate and continued his education at Montclair State University, where he received his BA. And whereas Ryan, born in Belleville, moved to Nutley in 1979, and has been an active member of the community. Currently, Ryan resides in Glen Ridge with his fiancee, Simona. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners, the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, joined with the citizens of Nutley, to salute and congratulate Grand Marshall Mary Ellen Klein, Deputy Grand Marshall John Cruz, Parade Queen Mary Kate Hood, Member of the Year Maureen Connor, and Police Officer of the Year Ryan Mulligan, as they are honored here tonight. I very proudly and humbly move these resolutions.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
This is why Nutley, New Jersey, is one of America's greatest places to live. Because people like you, individuals like you, who give a lot, and I mean a lot, as Commissioner Tucci said. Thank you very much, God bless you, and I'm really proud and honored to vote yes.
Commissioner Tucci?
Yes.
Commissioner Evans?
Absolutely, yes. Congratulations to everyone.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Congratulations all, yes.
Mayor Petracco?
I'd like this to add and echo some of Commissioner Tucci's resolutions by May. I first like to congratulate everyone. I also want to just recognize our Assemblyman Ralph Caputo for coming out tonight and for all your support with the Nutley Irish and the other many things that you do for Nutley. Thank you for coming, Ralph. And I'd like to congratulate one of the honorees, being he belongs to Public Safety, Ryan Mulligan. And when I walked in today, Ryan, I have to say, even though you were complaining about your uniform being a little tight on you and snug, I think you look great tonight. And I'm very proud of you, and I'm glad you're part of Public Safety. I vote aye.
Mayor, I'd like to call up the President of Nutley Irish American Association, Tom McHenry.
I want to thank the Mayor and the Board of Commissioners. Every year, you work very hard with us, constantly, all year long. Soon as we close one year, we're out to the next. And you five gentlemen right now are biggest supporters, and we're very happy to live in a town like this. We all come out for everything, we come out all year long. We help the community, we give back as much as we could. We're there for you guys, because you're always there for us. And thank you very much.
Thank you. That's very nice. Assemblyman, would you like to come up and say a few words at the podium, please? Thank you so much, Assemblyman. Pictures, or?
Yes, everyone, please come forward so we can take a photo. Assemblyman, you may not want to say a few words, but you're going to be in the picture. You'll fit. We'll turn sideways.
I'll take John, Commissioner, I'll take John here.
We're going to take a little, we're going to take like a five-minute recess just to give the families a chance to take pictures. If there's anyone that does not want to stay for the business portion of the meeting, this would be a good time to get up and exit. Thank you. Don't leave at once.
Seema, how'd those pictures come out, all right? But the pictures were okay? Did you look at them at all? I think, I mean, I talked to, we'll have, I think, nine. They have somebody else who's doing something, so it'll be nine of them. For a small town, that's a lot. Paul Allen, I think we're going to try to put one at the, we talked about it today. Company Service Bureau's taking over the Red Cross family. So... So, uh, food place. Those people definitely. Thank you.
Good night, everyone. Okay, Madam Clerk, we're gonna go back on the record.
Yes, Mayor.
Let me just get organized a little bit.
We are, uh, for ordinance number 3327. I think that's where we are. Under public hearing.
Okay. This, um, next ordinance, um, is, uh, ordinance number 3327 regarding the Hoffman Roach redevelopment plan, which we are gonna defer this evening. But before we do, um, counsel, would you like to say a few words of where we're at?
Sir Mayor, the, um, I know we've been deferring this ordinance for several meetings. Hope to be able to move it soon, perhaps in an amended form, but there has been some progress related to the negotiations, Hackensack, and Seton Hall, and Hoffman the Roach. I think, hopefully, in the next few weeks, we may see some progress.
Okay, thank you. Well, now, move on to resolutions. Commissioner Tucci, I think you're first up.
Mayor. Whereas sealed bids for plumbing, heating, air conditioning, refrigeration, service, and purchase of equipment were taken on April 29th, 2015, in the township of Nutley. April 29th, 2015? Is that correct, Madam Clerk?
I believe that should be 2016.
Well, I don't think so.
Oh, no, that was, that's too early. Probably a mistake.
Have to correct that date, but we'll continue. And whereas Advanced Mechanical Corp., 173 Franklin Lando Nutley, New Jersey, was the low bidder at a service rate per hour of $75, and whereas the contract is not to exceed $90,000 and funds are available from account number 508-200 for services continued upon adoption of the 2016 budget with an option to extend for one year, having been certified by the chief financial officer, said certification being attached to this resolution, now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley County, Essex State, New Jersey, that a contract for plumbing, heating, air conditioning, refrigeration service, and purchase of equipment be awarded to Advanced Mechanical Corporation. I move the resolution.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Before I vote, I believe the correct date is December 22nd, 2015, that the bids were taken.
22nd, 2016. Commissioner Evans?
Aye, and my mic was off, and I was, uh, just wanted for the record, I seconded the resolution.
Yes, Commissioner. And Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Pacheco?
Aye.
Whereas sealed bids were received for electrical services on Tuesday, December 22nd, 2015, in the township of Nutley, and whereas Sal Electric, 83 Fleet Street, Jersey City, New Jersey, was the lowest bidder at labor with a per-hour rate for foreman of $93.90, a per-hour rate for journeyman at $82.36, and an hourly rate for an apprentice of $28.82, whereas funds are available from account 6-01-508-200, subject to the adoption of the 2016 budget, not to exceed $40,000, and have been certified by the chief financial officer, said certification being attached to this resolution, now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley County, Essex State, New Jersey, that a contract for electrical services be awarded to Sal Electric, 83 Fleet Street, Jersey City, New Jersey. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Pacheco?
Aye.
Whereas Department of Parks and Public Property has determined that there is a need to renovate the deteriorating facade at the facility at 44 Park Avenue, and whereas the Parks and Public Property Department has determined that the cost of the renovation received on November 12th and the original bid amount exceeds the amount budgeted for the project, and whereas NJSA 48:11-13-2 permits the rejection of all bids under such circumstances, now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley County, Essex State, New Jersey, that all bids advertised, received, and opened are hereby rejected. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Pacheco?
Aye.
That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Evans, please.
Thank you. Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County, Essex State, of New Jersey, that the municipal clerk, be and she, is hereby authorized to, and directed to advertise a request for proposals for grant writing services. Be it further resolved that the request for proposals shall be due Wednesday, February 3rd, 2016, at 3:00 a.m., addressed to the municipal clerk, township of Nutley, 1 Kennedy Drive.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Pacheco?
Aye.
Whereas the property known as Block 7004, Lot 3, 16 Myrtle Avenue, Nutley, New Jersey, has been acquired by the New Jersey Housing and Mortgage Finance Agency, and whereas pursuant to NJSA 55:14K-34 and NJSA 54:4-3A, B, and F, said property is owned by an agency of the state of New Jersey, uh, being used for a public purpose and therefore tax exempt, whereas NJSA 55:14K-34A provides that all property of the agency is public property denoted, uh, devoted to an essential public and governmental function, and purpose shall be exempt from all taxes and special assessments of the state for any subdivision or subdivision thereof, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County, Essex State, of New Jersey, that the New Jersey Housing and Mortgage Finance Agency be granted full exemption from the payment of property taxes from December 31st, 2015, and all subsequent years thereafter on Block 7004, Lot 3, known as 16 Myrtle Avenue, Nutley, New Jersey, as authorized by statute, so move.
Second.
Commissioner.
I'm sorry, just by, uh, background, um, certain properties, when granted a mortgage lien or note fail, that agency takes over the property, so it's their intent to actually address the needs of the home and back on the market.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Pacheco?
Aye.
Whereas the, uh, New Jersey State Statute 54:3.3 provides certain war veterans who have suffered serious disability while in service, full exemption from their dwelling house, uh, and a lot which is located, uh, full tax exemption, uh, which is, uh, which is located, whereas the following taxpayer has filed an application for allowance of a full tax exemption with proper supporting documentation, thus making taxpayer eligible, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, Essex, that Alexander O. Martinez be granted full exemption from the payment of property taxes from December 1st, 2015, and all subsequent years thereafter on Block 5701, Lot 11, known as 351 Chestnut Street, so move.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Pacheco?
Aye.
Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, the County of Essex, State, of New Jersey, that the treasurer be and she is hereby authorized to refund overpayments of tax charges for, uh, Block 7804-4 for $45, Blocks 3701-C6506 for $310.50, Block 2802-1 for $3,080.01, for Block 2402-4 for $2,445.01, for 1701-1 for $2,188.45, for Block 7806-1, $182.05, for Block 1401-C1131 for $2,574.88. All of these, except for the last one, are for the year 2014. The last one is for the year 2015, and this is for overpayments of tax charges in the amount in total of $10,825.90, so move.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Pacheco?
Aye.
Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, the County of Essex, State, of New Jersey, that the treasurer be and she is hereby authorized to refund overpayments of water charges in the amount of $879.06 for Block 2801-23, and for Block, uh, 1301-C071 for that total.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Pacheco?
Aye.
Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, uh, of the Township of Nutley, the County of Essex, State, of New Jersey, that the treasurer be and she is hereby authorized to cancel water charges in the amount of $611.25 for Block 7403 for $107.87, and for Blocks 7601 for $453.38 for the year 2015, so move.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Pacheco?
Aye.
Whereas the Township of Nutley entered into a contract with EIC Inspection Agency Corp., 375 Kennedy Boulevard, New Jersey, uh, Jersey City, New Jersey, on January 1st, 2013, to provide elevator inspection services. The initial contract term covered a period of three years, which expired December 31st, 2015. The contract provides an option to extend the contract for two additional years, and whereas the township wishes to exercise a two-year option for EIC inspection, which will extend the contract to December 31st, 2017, under an amended contract unless terminated by the township within thirty, with 30 days' notice to the contractor, as stated in the original and amended contract dated January 1st, 2013, and January 1st, 2016, respectively. Whereas the cost of the two-year option, uh, to the contract will not exceed $24,000, whereas the funds are available in account entitled Elevators Account, uh, 601-217-205, and funds subject to the adoptions of the 2016, and said funds are, are subject to the adoption of the 2016 budget and certification of the chief financial officer, whereas the anticipated term of this contract is for a period of 24 months, uh, January 1st, 2016 through December 1st, 2017. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, the Township of Nutley, that a contract be awarded to EIC Inspection Corporation for a period of two years from the date of commencement parties. The parties agree that the township shall have a right to terminate this contract within 30 days' written notice, uh, to the contractor, at which point the obligation of, shall be discontinued, and the contractor will be.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Pacheco?
Aye.
Whereas the Department of Revenue and Finance, Township of Nutley, wishes to purchase a Pitney Bowes Connect 3,000 postage machine from an authorized vendor under its state cooperating purchasing program, whereas the purchase of goods and services by local contracting units is authorized by local public contracts law, NJSA 40A, uh, colon 11-12, whereas Pitney Bowes Inc., 27 Water Drive, Waterview Drive, Shelton, Connecticut, has been awarded NJ contract number 75237 for mailroom equipment and maintenance for December 109th, January 28th, 2016, whereas the cost of the purchase of Pitney Bowes Connect 3,000 postage machine, including a 10-pound scale and meter rental, is $13,106, whereas the utilization of this contract is recommended on the ground, represents the best price available, whereas funds are available from accounts, ordinance 3323C, account C0190195 for $12,266.00, and 601220206 for $840, and have been certified by the chief financial officer, said certification being attached to this resolution. Funds in account 601220220 are subject to the adoption of the 2016 budget and certification by the chief financial officer, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Pitney Bowes Inc., be awarded a contract for purchase of the Pitney Bowes Connect 3,000-plus postage machine, including 10-pound scale and rental, a meter rental, in accordance with state contract 75237. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Pacheco?
Aye.
Whereas Patrick G. Wilkins is and has been certified as the Certified Tax Assessor for, uh, since January 2000, excuse me, Patrick Wilkins is and has been certified as a Certified Tax Assessor since January 1st, 2007, and satisfied the continuing education requirements for said certification, whereas the appointing authority of the Township of Nutley is desirous of appointing Patrick G. Wilkins, CTA, as Municipal Tax Assessor for the Township of Nutley, in accordance with NJSA 54:1-35.31, now therefore be resolved that the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State, of New Jersey, hereby appoint Patrick G. Wilkins to the position of Tax Assessor in the Township of Nutley effective, uh, December 15th, 2015, and starting a four-year term commencing July 1st, 2015, per NJSA 49A, 49A:9-148, ending in June, uh, June 30th, 2020. The period between December and July, Patrick will be finishing the vacated term of our former assessor, George LaBrizzi.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Pacheco?
Aye.
Whereas New Jersey Statute 48:419 provides that where debt service is to be paid in 2016 prior to the time of the final adoption of the 2016 budget, temporary appropriations shall be made for the amount of such debt in the manner and time provided herein provided, therefore, whereas the date of this resolution, as of the date of this resolution, subsequent to December 20th, 2015, whereas debt service will become due during the first six months of 2016, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, the Township of Nutley, that the following temporary appropriation be made. Current fund interest on bond, $44,600, NJEIT trust interest, $3,502, for a total debt service of $48,050, in the water operating account, NJEIT interest of $8,873, EIT fund principal for $20,000, a total of $34,700, so move.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Pacheco?
Aye.
Whereas 48:419, local budget law, provides that where any contracts, commitments, or payments are to be made prior to the final adoption of the 2016 budget, temporary appropriations be made for the purposes and amounts required in the manner provided, whereas the date of this, uh, first 30 days of 2016, whereas the total appropriation in the 2015 budget less appropriations made for capital improvement fund, debt service, and public assistance are as follows: current fund, $47,688,115, water utility, $4,329,304, whereas 26 and 1/4% of the total appropriation in the 2015 budget less appropriations for capital improvement fund, debt service, public assistance in said 2015 budget is as follows: current fund, $12,500, and $10,255.19, water utility, $1,36,442.30, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley County, Essex, New Jersey, that the following temporary appropriations be made, and that a certified copy of this resolution to, uh, the chief. Those are the summaries. There's a listing of appropriations, uh, which sum to those totals. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Pacheco?
Aye.
What do you have tonight, Commissioner? Uh, I was just gonna take a break for a moment. Need a rest after that? I was just gonna take a rest. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Commissioner Evans. Commissioner Scarpelli, please.
Whereas the township of Nutley pursuant to NJSA 52:3462C139, made by resolution and without advertising for bids, purchased goods or services through the use of a recognized, accepted cooperative purchasing program that has been developed utilizing a competitive bidding process by another contracting unit within the state of New Jersey or within another state when available, whereas the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley, passed Resolution 173-15, 2015, authorizing the purchasing, purchase certain goods or services from an approved National Joint Powers Alliance vendors pursuant to all conditions of the individual contracts, year 2015, commencing January 1st through December 31st, 2015, whereas the municipal clerk, Township of Nutley, has advertised a township notice of intent to award a contract under a national cooperative purchasing agreement, August 6th, 2015, issued, whereas the Township of Nutley Department of Public Works, works intends to purchase a CAT backhoe loader and related accessories from Foley Incorporated, 855 Centennial Avenue, Galloway, New Jersey, a vendor affiliated with the National Joint Powers Alliance, which is subject to all conditions applicable to the utilization of a national buying cooperative, whereas the Department of Public Works has spent several months researching several backhoe loaders and have determined that the CAT backhoe loader is best suited for the township's needs based on performance, cost savings, and minimal downtime, whereas Foley Incorporated has provided a quote for the CAT backhoe loader and related accessories in amount of $1,000. accessories amount of $1,750. Whereas funds are available in Capital Ordinance Number 3181D in the amount of $26,600 and Capital Ordinance Number 3242G in the amount of $5,000, and in Account Number 401-213 in the amount of $1,150, and has been certified by the Chief Financial Officer. Said certification attached to this resolution now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey. Purchasing Agent B and she is hereby authorized to purchase a CAT backhoe loader and related accessories amount of $1,750 from Foley Incorporated as approved National Joint Powers Alliance vendor. Remove the resolution.
Second?
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Pataco?
Aye. Whereas the Township of Nutley issued Resolution Number 33915 on November 23, 2015, stipulating bid opening date of December 16, 2015, at 3:00 p.m. prevailing time for the Park Avenue Monopole Co-location. Whereas the Township of Nutley issued Resolution Number 3368-15, December 15, 2015, extending the bid opening date to January 28, 2016, at 3:00 p.m. prevailing time for the Park Avenue Monopole Co-location. Whereas the Township desires to rescind Resolution Number 33915 and Resolution Number 3815 until further notice. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that Resolution Number 33915 and 368615 be hereby rescinded. And move the resolution.
Second?
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Pataco?
Aye. Whereas attached to Nutley through the Department of Public Works has need to acquire services of an engineering consultant as a non-fair and open contract pursuant to provisions of NJ SA 19:44A, 20.4, 20.5, as appropriate. Whereas the engineering coordinator has determined in certified writing, the value of the aggregated service provided by the vendor for the term of the contract will exceed $17,500. Whereas the anticipated term of the contract is for 12 months from January 1 through December 31, 2016. Whereas Penoni Associates has submitted a proposal dated December 29, 2015, indicating they will provide engineering services according to a fee schedule attached. Whereas Penoni Associates has completed and submitted a business entity disclosure certification, which certifies that said corporation has not made any reportable contributions to political or candidate committee in the Township of Nutley in the previous quarter. That the contract will prohibit Penoni Associates from making any reportable contributions through the term of the contract. Whereas the contract is not to exceed $165,000 for engineering services, and whereas funds are available from Account Number 601404200, and have been certified by the Chief Financial Officer, said certification be attached to this resolution. Therefore be resolved that the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley enter into a contract with Penoni Associates as described herein, and be further resolved that the business disclosure, entity certification, and determination of value be placed on file with this resolution. Be further resolved that a notice of this action will be printed once in Nutley sun in accordance with the Local Public Contracts Law. Move the resolution.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Pataco?
Aye.
Thank you. Whereas raffle applications have been reviewed from the following organizations, and the Nutley PBA Local 33, Civic Associations License Number 1-16 Off-Premise 50/50 Cash Raffle, Friday, November 18, 2016, Holy Family Church License Number 2-16 Off-Premise 50/50 Cash Raffle, Sunday, September 25, 2016, Holy Family Church License Number 3-16 Super 50/50 Cash Raffle, Thursday, September 22 through Sunday, September 25, 2016. Whereas the applications have been reviewed and approved by the Municipal Clerk and Police Department, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that the aforementioned licenses are approved, and the Municipal Clerk is authorized to issue the license. I move the resolution.
Second?
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Pataco?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes our business portion of the meeting. Madam Clerk, will you please read our five-minute rule?
Yes, Mayor. All persons addressing the Board of Commissioners regarding community concerns should approach the microphone and provide their name and address for the record. Unless further time is granted by the Board, each person shall limit their address to five minutes. All remarks of the Board and its individual members must be addressed to the Mayor. The Mayor may defer citizens' comments to the appropriate member of the Board. Dialogue between citizens and others addressing the Board shall be allowed unless the Mayor or presiding officer or the majority of the membership of the Board shall determine that the interests of decorum and/or the expeditious conduct of municipal business are being adversely affected by such dialogue.
Thank you. Is there anyone here this evening that would like to...
Rory Moore, 462 Chestnut Street. Mr. Pataco, under my First Amendment right, I do wish to address for five minutes. I'm not asking any questions. I don't expect any answers. I recently submitted an Oprah request concerning Chestnut Street, um, Tennessee property where the trees were, the DiBiase's, 345. My Oprah request, my Oprah request was very specific. I asked for the copy of the permit, which is three pages long. That's right off of your internet. I assume...
I'm sorry, Rory. What, you're trying to Oprah and what? Or internet?
Yes. I asked, this is a permit to refer tree removal from your internets, printed right off of there.
From the town?
Yes.
Okay.
Three pages. Very specific, and there's a numerous amount of detailed information concerning the trees. I did not receive a copy of the permit. I did receive a copy of the foresters' report, which immediately sparked some attention. According to the forest report, it was submitted to the clerk's office on January 14, 2015, and it was updated on January 12, 2016, and just said everything was cool, go ahead, chop the trees down. Permit clearly says you have to submit a plan for what trees will be cut down and what trees will be replaced. That wasn't included. Total amount wasn't included. Now, this citizen submitted a substantially similar one, asking for the permit as well. This was a permit that was sent down from the clerk's office, totally different from the three-page permit here. When a reasonable person were to receive this conflicting information, which one is going to be honored? If I ask for a permit off your internet that you maintain, three pages long, and it's a notice that if you cut down a tree and you don't file a permit, that you're subject to penalties and fines. Yet you'll have another permit nobody's ever seen. A reasonable person would start to ask, why is there so much conflicting information? I immediately forwarded my response, which is an email response, to DCA, who had the same questions I had. The correct answer that I was asking...
Why don't we just stop you for one second? Counsel, can you maybe examine those documents and see what the issue is?
One document is Mr. SEO's Oprah...
Response is right up top.
...with a complaint to the building department, along with, uh, December 30 with a copy of the permit, the cover page, out of Nutley Parks Apartment Tree Removal Permit. The other one is a form.
Trust me, it's on the website.
Really, when someone wants to have a tree removed, one of two ways. They can file an application through a site plan review, through the planning board, which is, I believe, occurred at Mr. DiBiase's property, and also, or, uh, in a class through the Township of Nutley Parks and Public Property for a tree removal permit. The other one is blank. I'm not sure what you're referring to. Permits here, permit issued as part of the planning board, site plan approval, from what I understand, that's what was provided to you.
Which one are you gonna use?
You could talk all you want about inconsistency. I don't see any issue here.
Well, Counsel, let me just interrupt you for one second. So, Mr. Moore, if there's an inconsistency there that you bring to our attention, that we could clean up to make it more user-friendly to our residents, we could always take that under consideration, and we appreciate you bringing that to our view.
To dispute with Mr. Giantempo saying, you go out to the shade tree, there's only one permit, not two.
Yeah, but I believe that they, for that project, it went through site plan approval through the planning board. Am I correct, Counsel?
It wasn't attached. That specific information was requested in the Oprah request.
Was produced.
No, for me, it wasn't produced. I just received an outdated, I have it on an email. I'll send you an email.
I'm not interested in debating. Five minutes. I have the...
Good. Mr. Moore?
The question, the question, it begs the question for a reasonable person, if I want to cut a tree down, and I go out to the website, to the shade tree, that's the one permit, it's three pages long. And the other one that Mr. Giantempo is referring to is not on the internet. So when a person wants to cut a tree down, there's only one application. Which one are you going to use?
Mayor, can I, can I, I might be able to clarify this a little bit. There are two avenues, all right, to obtain a tree permit. One's through the site plan approval process, where any trees that are included within the envelope of the improvement are in fact approved by the Code Enforcement Department, all right?
That was asked for in the Oprah. Wasn't provided.
Well, I'm sorry, I didn't hear what your question is.
That, he asked, Commissioner...
I asked for that specifically.
In his Oprah request.
It was not provided.
I can't speak to the Oprah request and what you did or did not receive, but I just want to explain it two ways. One is through that site plan process, Rory. The other one is through the Parks Department, where if an individual or a business wants to cut down a tree on their property, they can apply directly to the Parks Department, and then the forester will review that request and approve or deny it. And depending on what the decision is, if there's an appeal that someone wants to make, they can bring that before the Shade Tree Advisory Committee.
Can you appreciate the misunderstanding?
Yes, yes, I can.
That a reasonable person enters, wants to cut a tree down, they go to the website, Shade Tree Commission, permit to cut tree down, and this is the permit that's produced.
I don't, I can't see what that is, but after the meeting, I'd be happy to take a look at it for you, and if we need to clean up the website so that it's not ambiguous, then we will absolutely do that.
So then I'm gonna resubmit one, asking for that procedure, so I could see it, which was in the original one. If I want, you want to redress it, I'll redress it. What I'm looking for is the permits and the site approvals, which were contained in the document I requested.
Okay.
Mr. Evans? Mr. Moore, as a point of clarification, when an applicant is interested and says, "On my property, I have this big tree that's in the backyard of my property, front yard, side yard of that tree, and I would like to take it down." The permit application that you are referring to, which you peeled off of the website, is the application, it's not the permit, it's the application that one fills out that goes before the Shade Tree Commission in order to obtain a permit to remove that, and has a requirement that says you need to pay, I think it's $50?
$50.
And generally replace the tree, or do something on that...
$100 per tree.
Which is refundable, if a replacement tree is in fact placed somewhere on the property or on someone else's property.
That's the normal, like, when someone wants to do that. In the case of Center Street, which you're referring to, this is an applicant who submitted an application that said that they wanted to do construction on their property. As part of that process, the code office would not issue a tree permit of any kind for them to remove trees. They would actually forward them to the planning board, where they would go through the process before that planning board, where the plans are reviewed, where they have to disclose what they want to build, how they want to build it, how it impacts the community, how, what they're gonna do on the lot. And in that, they provide a drawing and a sketch of what trees are gonna go down and what trees are gonna be replaced, or what bushes are gonna be replaced.
Which are the precise questions on the application.
Which is, goes through, and so I don't know where that application, you know, whether or not that was filled out, or how that was filled out. I'm just referring to...
I hope you don't think that I produced this document just to argue it.
Of course not. I believe it's on the website, absolutely. We just relaunched the website to put a lot of these forms up on the website to make it easier so people can find them. So I think it's great that you found it, because that's fulfilling the purpose of the website. But what I am saying is that as part of the planning board process to go through site plan approval, or if it's before the Board of Adjustment, they would go through the process to make a determination of, if a tree is coming down, is it in the footprint of the construction? Once they approve the site plan, they will issue a resolution to that effect that stipulates those terms, and that would guide what would happen on that property. But a Shade Tree Department-specific permit to remove a tree as part of that process is not required.
So a reasonable person who went out to remove a tree, because everything you just referred to is in this permit. So when I, I'll reissue my Oprah, because I want to see them. And if I refer to this Oprah, and this is the only permit on the website, there's no two or three or process A, there's no Chinese menu here, one permit. This is the permit, according to DCA, that should be honored, because all of the information you just said is on this permit.
And if you were to request the site plan approval resolution for that property that was issued by the planning board, I believe all of the information you're looking for would be in there.
I'll do that.
And I think it would be very valuable.
And I expect, I expect it would all be answered then.
I, whatever is in there, I don't, I don't know what's in there, but I'm saying that what was approved on that part of that process, is part of a site plan approval, I'm sure the planning board would have done a good job, as they always do, in making sure they review those applications.
Just to solidify, just to, within conclusion, everything that you suggested that you have to go through is on the permit.
And in a site plan application to the Department, I don't know if that permit itself is required to be filled out.
It is attached.
If it's the application, whatever that is, I don't know if that's required to be attached. I don't know that as details, but we will make sure that we follow up. And if we need to clarify that procedure, as Commissioner Pataco said, we'll be happy to do that.
It is not my intention to give you a hard time arguing with it.
But I think it's great.
It's that everything that you said, Mr. Tucci said, is on the permit. When I ask for a copy of the permit, those numbers will be filled in, and those plans will be attached.
I don't believe that's a permit. I think you're referring to it as an application.
Then I'll refile it, because it says application and permit.
And I think from that application, a permit is issued, so I think they're two different documents.
I'll refile it.
Thank you. Is there anyone else this evening that would like to address the Board of Commissioners? Do you know one? Move to adjourn.
Mr. Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?